Back through there like you holding up a gun or something.
I'll order the May 2nd, 2017 Regular Meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Invite you to stand if you choose. Commissioner Williams, Rick Williams is leading our invocation and then the pledge this evening.
Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings of this life. We ask that you be with us now as we consider the city's business. Give us the wisdom to be able to consider each and everything that's brought before us in a way that would be pleasing unto thee. All this we ask in Jesus' name and for his bliss and holy sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag
of the United States of America
And to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call a roll.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Recognize that city managers at home tonight watching us on TV recovering from a little procedure, and we want to welcome Assistant City Manager Katie Ward with us tonight and City Clerk Ashley Jackson. Thank you all for taking over this evening. Under awards and recognitions, I'd like to call your attention to this piece of artwork. That's heavy, I didn't want to drop it there. That was presented to Commissioner Paragon and me while we attended an event with people from the 101st Airborne Division at Fort Campbell last week. A hundred and one soldiers were in town to participate in some team building exercise, and they invited us to have lunch with them. As we did, they presented this homemade sculpture from within their brigade. We want to thank Major General Andrew Pappas, who is the commanding general of the 101st Airborne and Fort Campbell, and outgoing Second Brigade Combat Team Colonel Brett Sylvia, and incoming Colonel Joseph Escondo. And so we want to thank them for their service to our country and their particular goodwill towards us, so we'll display that proudly. Thank you so much for that this evening. And I believe we have a couple of other events. Does anybody have any other awards or recognitions they'd like to bring up? I'm sorry?
Is there a proclamation?
Oh, yes, but I think, Mr. Gardner, would you like us to go first, or you have something to talk about?
I do, but if you'd like to go first, I'd be grateful.
All right. Well, we have a proclamation regarding Drinking Water Week that our BGMU representative, Commissioner Rick Williams, will happily proclaim for on behalf of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners.
Right. On behalf of the office of the mayor, Bowling Green, Kentucky, this proclamation is for Drinking Water Week, May 7th through 13th, 2017. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now, therefore, we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through 13th, 2017, as Drinking Water Week in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and encourage all of our residents to recognize the importance and value of our drinking water. And it's signed by Mayor Bruce Wilkerson, City Bowling Green.
I'd like to present that to you. You would come on up, and we'll present it, and then you can make your presentation. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor Wilkerson and the city commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you and to be recognized with a proclamation. Just briefly, I wanted to share that Bowling Green Water System has been in existence since 1868. But it wasn't until, at that time, it was just a steam pumping station, pumped for all river water, up into Reservoir Hill, and that's what was distributed to the city. It wasn't until 1928 that we built our first treatment plant that included filtration and chlorination. In that 60-year interim, people were dying on a regular basis from waterborne disease, cholera, typhoid, dysentery, and other waterborne diseases. So it's easy to forget now what it was like during that period, before we had filtration and disinfection of the water supply. We tend to take it for granted. It's out of sight and out of mind. So we just take this opportunity to celebrate during National Drinking Water Week and to remind everybody that it is out there. We have needs going on, and that our operators, our maintenance technicians, our engineers, accountants, customer service folks are all on the job 24/7, 365 days a year to protect the resource and the public health. So we ask you figuratively to raise a glass to all those folks and just remember them and the health benefits that public water system provides. So I was told I had 30 seconds, and I'm already over. And we'll bring gifts next week when we're actually in Water Week. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mike.
We appreciate it. It's here for water. I want to recognize that Executive Director Mark Iverson is here with you, too, I guess, just to make sure you're within 30 seconds. All right. And the next presentation we have is from city employee Mike Grubbs, who also serves on the United Way Board.
Afternoon. The United Way of Southern Kentucky held their annual meeting and awards reception in February, and at that time, they presented the Community Impact Partnership Award to five different organizations who they felt were moving the needle on United Way's work in the areas of health, education, income, and safety net. The City of Bowling Green was one of the recipients of the partnership award, and it was given to the city as well as fiscal court, Warren County Fiscal Court, for our support of Southern Kentucky 211. We were the first major governmental supporters of the 211 program in south-central Kentucky. And for those who may not know, 211 is pretty much a national call center where people can call for social services needs, referral for a variety of social community needs such as housing, food, clothing, shelter, transportation, childcare, medical care, and substance abuse. And 211 call centers are operated by United Ways. Unfortunately, Kentucky is one of just a handful of states that does not have 211 across the state, but the United Way of Southern Kentucky decided to take this on for our region. They started the call center last July and are using other funding such as government support, grants, other contributions to fund the center rather than using the funds we typically think of United Way are receiving, which is the employee campaigns through employers. That money is still being used to provide funds for the very valuable programs offered in the Tin County area. The city funded our portion of 211 through the CDBG Grant Program, which started in October. During the seven months since that time, 211 has taken over 3,900 calls from Warren County, about 1,000 of which were from within the city limits. And obviously, it's hard sometimes to collect demographic data from people calling in needing services. But just to let you know, the top needs for assistance during that seven months have been for utility, service, payment assistance, food pantries, rental assistance, temporary housing, emergency housing, prescription expenses, counseling services, and even dentistry, as well as transportation. One thing to keep in mind is other cities and counties look to Bowling Green and Warren County in what we're doing. If the city and the county are helping to fund Southern Kentucky 211, then they may as well. And that's what the board is finding this year, is that the other cities and counties are starting to include funding in their budgets because Bowling Green and Warren County did. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you for your support for 211 this past year. I've given you a copy of the 2016 report, and it's also available on their website at uwsk.org. Thank you.
Commissioner Grubbs.
Appreciate it.
All right. And that's city manager coming to the floor.
No specific comments, but on behalf of Mr. DeFebo, I do want to extend his regrets. I know he would prefer to be here than to miss Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Believe that.
First item is approval of minutes for a regular meeting on April 18th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Paragon. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-13.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Attractive Land Containing 0.2296 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential located at 1412 Magnolia Street, presently owned by C. Rob LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Denning. It's the second reading of an ordinance that was presented last week, passed by Planning Commission on a unanimous vote. Any other comments or questions? Call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-14.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Tracks of Land Containing 0.5682 acre from CB Central Business and GB General Business to CB Central Business located at 701 Chestnut Street and 517 East 7th Avenue, presently owned by Flora Templeton Stewart.
So moved. Paragon, second by Nash. Second reading.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-15.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance Amending Chapter 22 Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Subchapter 22-3 Operation of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to Rescind Language Related to Trains.
So moved.
Second.
By Williams, second. Paragon, second reading on the item regarding Robinson Lane Agreement, and I think we've discussed that many times unless there's any further discussion. Please call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-61.
Municipal Order Approving the Career Path Advancement of Charles E. Gray Jr. to the position of Operations Technician 1 in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
By Nash, second by Denning. Ms. Ward.
We passed a career path program back in 2006, which identified that as employees are hired in in the entry-level position of Labor 2, once they've received their CDL and have at least six months' service, then they are eligible for an advancement. And in this case, Mr. Gray has met all requirements and is recommended to advance from Labor 2 to Operations Technician 1. Mr. Gray is not here, I don't believe.
I'll answer questions. Congratulations, Mr. Gray. So please call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-16.
Ordinance Relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance Amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified Employees of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. Ms. Ward.
We had a retirement back in December, and with all positions, as soon as a position becomes vacant, the department looks at that position, looks at the responsibilities of that position, and determines whether or not a reorganization or a change in that position is needed, or even if that position is still needed. In this case, the department did review the position and determined that a reorganization was appropriate. So Mr. DeFebo and Mr. Belcher have recommended that a title change and an upgrade are provided to change an administrative manager, which was a position that oversaw just the cemetery administration area, to a cemetery division manager, which will also oversee the maintenance for cemeteries. So we're going to bring together the maintenance and cemetery under one manager. That manager will then report to the director for the department. And if you have any additional questions, Mr. Grubbs and Mr. Belcher are here.
I'll answer questions. I think he's muttering about you, Brent, I'm not sure. Please call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-62.
Municipal Order Approving the Appointment of Vivian Greis to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Denning. This is an appointment replacing the expiring term of Scott Gary, who served us well but cannot succeed himself. Ms. Greis is currently employed with the West Kentucky Heart and Lug Center and has extensive experience in our committee and fulfills our general business member classification. Any comments or questions? And I would have put her on last week, but her email got in my spam, so I didn't catch it in time. Please call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal Order 2017-63.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2017-41 for Fiscal Year 2017 Fountain Square Park Rehabilitation Project from Scott &amp; Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $431,029.25.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Denning. Ms. Ward.
This is a project, long time coming, I just have to say. In an effort to complete some much-needed capital maintenance to Fountain Square Park, a bid was issued, and this bid included the structural repairs to the fountain. We did have it inspected and determined that there are some needs to be repaired. It also includes painting most of the fixtures that are in the park, a lot of the light fixtures. You can kind of see their old green color coming through. We've got some older flower urns and some drinking fountains and some other elements that really do need to be updated and freshened. And then we've got the replacement of the brick pavers, which are currently a safety hazard, tripping hazard in many of those instances. And so we're going to have those replaced and also replace some broken curbing. Fountain Square Park is obviously an integral part of our downtown, and we want to keep that historical aspect and charm that it brings. We did receive only one bid for this project. However, it did come in under budget, including the two recommended alternatives for it. The project will begin in July after the Great Race, is that correct, coming through, Bowling Green, which I guess is at the end of June. We wanted to make sure the park was still in good condition until that particular event was over. So it'll begin in July, and we hope to have it done by November, which is just in time for the holiday season. We do suspect that the bids came in under budget because of the change in the Kentucky prevailing wage law. We are very pleased that hopefully this project is one that's really identified that as being a positive change for us. And if you have any other questions or would like any other additional information about the project, Brent Belcher is here.
Yes, Mr. Denning has been anxiously waiting to ask a question over here. Mr. Denning.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to talk about some added history to downtown Fountain Square Park. I've had the pleasure, many years, of knowing the name Murphy, as well as working for Mike Murphy for several years. And this will be the third generations of Murphys to work on Fountain Square Park. Mike's dad, and in his younger years, Mike Murphy. And the project manager for this that is going to start in this summer would be Mike's son, Cole Murphy. So that's a lot of history over a lot of years, working with benchmark to our community, the Fountain Square Park. And I can tell you right up front that it will be built to our specs and above. It will be built right. We don't have to have people checking on it every other day. Our engineering staff, it's going to be done the way we want it, and Mike Murphy and Cole will do a great job for us. We're lucky to have them as the bidder, and of course, to win that bid. And I can assure you that we have something to look forward to in them working on our park. They know the importance of the park to Bowling Green, Kentucky, and the Murphy family, and Scott and Murphy, and Scott and Murphy and Daniel, when they do something, they do it right. They don't put roofs on wrong. They put roofs on right. And thank you, Mayor.
One thing that Mr. Murphy generally does on projects, and I'm sure he will on this one, is has a long history of taking pictures before and after. I think you brought, Joe, some Fountain Square pictures from long ago for us to see up here. Thank you for doing that.
And I'm responsible for it, and I want it back. I want to know the last person that holds it in their hand.
I'm kind of afraid to touch it, Joe.
You've got to be.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know we heard about this project at the retreat. Will the pavers on the sidewalks outside the park?
We're not addressing those at this time. We currently have out a request for qualifications, thank you, that we're going to hire a company to come in and give us some professional design ideas and concepts that we can use to help deal with the rest of the downtown square. Right now, we're simply focusing on the park itself.
What can we do in the meantime about the number of pavers that are missing from where the pavers are on the outside of the park? There are several in front of Merrill Lynch. There are several at the other end of Main Street at the square. I just worry about somebody falling down.
Agreed. Those are definitely safety issues. We can certainly go in, and our operations division can fill those. The pavers that are there now are not really legitimate pavers, if you will. They weren't meant to be laid the way that they are. I think that's been a lot of our issues. But we can repair those in the meantime. Be a short-term fix, obviously. We hope to start construction on any projects that do come out of the request for qualifications and an approval of that contract through fiscal year 2019, so in about a year and a half.
If we could just work on that, I guess, getting them repaired in the meantime. I'm fortunate enough to work on the square, and so I walk the square a lot, and I see a lot of people trip. Fortunately, nobody has fallen. I just want to see that remedied as quick as we can.
When we say go out, we are not talking about necessarily going out of town. We have, you mean, request bids, and we have local people, hopefully, that are going to bid on this project.
It's certainly possible. This is a request for qualifications, a little bit different at this point. We're not looking for contracts for construction. What we're looking for is a company that can come in and provide their qualifications as a design firm and engineering firm, and then we would look to contract with that company if they met the qualifications.
Under the public, this is where the elongated oval will now become a rectangle.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Yeah. Until we have the design firm come in and the engineering company actually review that and come up with some recommendations, that's a concept that staff came up with, but it's not necessarily the best solution for that. So we want to get the professionals in here to help us determine what would be the best route to take.
How do we know what, Mr. Murphy, know what to bid?
Pardon me?
Oh, it's not going to the, no, I thought we were doing the curbs, too.
Let me try to clear some of this up, because I've been involved heavily in what Katie's talking about. The bid tonight is just the fountain work and the pavers directly around the fountain in Fountain Square Park. The RFQ that we were just talking about is a request for qualifications for an engineering design firm to look at the entire downtown area. So it's much broader, and we're not looking to do anything for that in probably a year. So Mr. Murphy's project is related to repairing the fountain and the pavers directly around the fountain inside Fountain Square Park, inside the park itself. So this is really just a park project. What we're looking at through the RFQ and the engineering design firm is really a downtown square improvements project. So it's much broader, much larger area, a lot of other things to look at. So they're related, but different, completely different.
I misunderstood, because it talks about replacing limestone curbing, too.
There's limestone curbing in the park along the concrete pathways. We still have some existing limestone curbing along some of those pathways, internal pathways in the park. So those would come out and be replaced with concrete curbing, some as concrete and some as limestone. So it's trying to make the park all congruent with each other. That's why the painting and the updating and the fountain and the pavers and the concrete. So that's the park project.
Turn that up for him.
Not a problem.
Mr. Cole Murphy is right there next to his dad. Stand up, Cole. He's an engineer, and he's going to be the one that's in charge of the project. And I see him just about every day. So if we got anything that we don't like, I'll take care of him, okay?
No pressure. No pressure. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Denning.
I was drinking that water, I'm sorry. Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-64.
Municipal Order Approving the Bowling Green Warren County Radio Agency Policies and Procedures Manual.
So moved.
Second. Paragon, second by Nash. Ms. Ward.
This city and county created a committee about six years ago to oversee the implementation of a new radio system for both the city and the county. That project is coming to a completion with the implementation, hopefully soon. And as they are starting to get the project and the system up and running, the committee itself recommends some, recommends approval of policies and procedures to operate the system. And Ronnie Pearson was going to be here, but I believe Chief Hawkins is here if you have any questions or require further explanation of the policies and procedures.
You have a chance to...
I saw them the first time the other day after they recommended them. I skimmed them and glanced through them. I didn't see anything that would jump out at me.
They look like Water Lake language. Yes, sir.
Chief, are we at the stage today to where if we have an emergency, a major emergency, all of the agencies, emergency responders have a Channel 2 or a 3 that they can communicate?
Yes, sir. All the local emergency agencies, police, fire, EMS, our public works, all of our city departments, all of the county departments, including their parks and public works and so forth, they all have access to the radio, so we can all work together. We can all talk together. All of our radios are compatible with one another, so we have a, really, a network countywide of communication between city, county, to include Western Kentucky Police Department as well.
Bill.
Questions? Please call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-17.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Tracks of Land Containing 9.64 acres from GB General Business, RM4 multifamily residential, P. Public, OPR Office and Professional Residential, OPC Office and Professional Commercial, and HB Highway Business to Highway Business located at 0 East 2nd Avenue, 825 East 2nd Avenue, 0 US 31W Bypass, 347 US 31W Bypass, and a portion of 250 Park Street, presently owned by Bowling Green Warren County Community Hospital Corporation, doing business as the Medical Center and Riverside Professional Center Owners Association Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second. Williams. First reading of the rezoning ordinance held in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission with a unanimous vote. I understand this is the location for the Joint UK Medical Center, Medical School Campus, location of the hospital and the bypass. Are there any questions or comments from anyone?
This is where the EMS used to be, and we went down to the ribbon cutting for their new facility today. So nice headquarters, nice addition.
Call a roll.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-18.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Attractive Land Containing 0.3099 acre from RM3 multifamily residential to RM4 multifamily residential located at 216 Galeway, presently owned by Plan B Holdings[1789.74]
LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams. First reading of ordinance, again, before planning and zoning, was a unanimous vote on Gale Way for multifamily. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-19.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of an unimproved right-of-way with frontage along US 31W bypass and located south of Park Street.
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. It's first reading of an ordinance that's gone through many people's hands to sign off on, but unanimous in front of the planning commission. It's, you can see from the photograph, it's not being used and hadn't been used in my memory, Joe. Do you remember it being a street there?
I don't think so.
Okay. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-65.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to motorcycle lease agreement with Motorsports of Bowling Green Incorporated to extend the lease term to February 28, 2018, for lease of four standard police package Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the sum of $1 each.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perrigen. Ms. Ward.
We've been fortunate for the past 12 years to have Harley-Davidson partner with the city to provide these motorcycles to us for our police department. There is currently a request for an extension of the current agreement. This recommendation would extend the agreement to a full three years. We were, several years back, we were doing a one-year agreement with new motorcycles each year. We, last year, extended it to a two-year agreement where we would hold the motorcycles for two years. They're now requesting that we hold the motorcycles for three years. Because the value of those motorcycles stays intact, it actually saves us money. We don't have to outfit them every year. It's, it's a win-win for both Harley-Davidson and for us. So that is a recommendation to go ahead and extend that for the third year. And then from this point forward, all the lease agreements would be a three-year lease agreement, again, exchanging out the motorcycles every three years. We definitely want to thank the Martin family for initiating this particular partnership and it continuing to this day. And if you have any questions, obviously, Chief Hawkins is here if you want any additional information about our motor unit that we have in the place.
That's your question. Something that Mr. Martin did before he passed away. He had a great love for motorcycles. We miss him greatly, but thank him for, the family for continuing this program with the city and for a dollar a year each, so please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance BG 2017-20.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing a total of approximately 101.57 acres of property located on Lever's Lane with property presently owned by Chandler Residential LLC and Bowling Green Warren County Community Hospital Corporation, doing business as the Medical Center, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits and further approving an associated economic development annexation incentive agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash. Ms. Ward.
We had several areas in our community that are either surrounded all by city property, city limits, or we've got some targeted areas that we've identified. And in 2012, the city board of commissioners approved an economic development annexation incentive policy. The strategy of the policy was to expand our city boundaries for both population growth and economic development. This particular annexation brings in territory which was identified in target area four of that particular policy, obviously along Lever's Lane. This is one piece we've been looking at for several years now. The annexation is by consent of the owner, so we have their consent on file, and this particular annexation would also approve an incentive agreement, and the incentive agreement would allow the property owner to receive the rebate of city property taxes for up to five years, and then the, the activation of the agreement has to be in the next 10 years.
Comments or que- I think Mr. Chandler, and I know he recognizes the wisdom of coming into the city, and we encourage other people who live outside or continues to us to consider that as well. Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-66.
Municipal Order approving the year 14 annual action plan of the Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant entitlement funding and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Ms. Ward.
We had a public hearing about this particular action plan draft at our last meeting, and Mr. Cook is here, as is Mr. Childers, if you have any questions.
Have any more questions for Mr. Childers or Mr. Cook? Please call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Municipal Order 2017-67.
Municipal Order approving the amendment of a contract with Community Action of Southern Kentucky Incorporated for transportation services for fiscal year 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Perrigen, second by Wi-
Each year, the city approves an agreement for the operation of our public transit system. This year, we're looking to amend the agreement to clean up some ownership of the transit assets and to further outline responsibilities and use of the maintenance, use and maintenance of those assets. We've purchased several pieces of either buses and maintenance facility using the federal transportation funds, so we want to get that cleaned up. And if you have any additional questions, Mr. Cook is here to answer those or to provide additional information.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Last item on the agenda, so it's time for public comments. If anybody has any comments they'd like to bring to the commission's attention, this would be the appropriate time. Come right up, please, sir, and give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Robert Lyons Hill, 1149 College Street, and this is concerning the fairness doctrine. I personally don't have a problem with the fairness doctrine, but all that I ask is that, that it doesn't affect my personal faith in a legal manner. That's all I have to say concerning that. Also, I have a concern about, about the downtown area concerning the restaurant area where I need to be able to walk on the sidewalk. I've been having problems with that. I have talked to at least one owner of a restaurant and asked him to move his items, and he has done that, and I do appreciate that. But if you could speak with the other restaurants concerning that, thank you.
The lease requires them to leave at least five feet width from the, from the curb to the-
They're, they're not doing that, sir.
Okay. Thank you. If you'd, if you'd make us aware of where they are, we'll make sure that they find out. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Megan Houston, and I live on our small farm at 7314 Blue Level Road in Rockfield, Kentucky. And I'm also the senior minister at First Christian Church in downtown Bowling Green. In 2012, it was hard to make the decision to leave a church that my husband and I loved and move to Bowling Green, but we knew we wanted our future children to grow up in a place where they would meet people who are different from them. When I got to First Christian, I learned that we have many members who identify as gay, but many of them have asked that we not make an issue out of it. We've been having, we've had discussions about the Bible and homosexuality, but other than that, it hasn't been much of an issue for us. We have gay deacons, elders, board members, and have hosted same-sex ceremonies. So I was shocked to discover that not only does Bowling Green not have a fairness ordinance, but that there's been so much resistance to it. That just doesn't sound like the Bowling Green that I know and love. I'm having a hard time understanding why we've made such a big issue out of passing this common sense ordinance. One time, I was asked by WBKO if any gay people attended my church. I responded yes, but I just kept thinking about that question. Yes, we have gay people, we have all kinds of people, but we don't reduce anyone to just one label. It seems like most of the time I'm interviewed by the media, they are looking for a liberal church and a conservative church and showing how different we are. But I wonder, are we really all that different? After meeting with Commissioner Perrigen and Mayor Wilkerson, I don't think we are. I know that you all are tired of this, and I understand that this is disruptive to your meetings, but please understand that failing to pass a fairness ordinance is disruptive to the very lives of the people who you've promised to serve and who simply want to be protected. I'm here tonight because I believe passing this ordinance matters and that history will judge us.